Good morning and welcome to the Jefferson County Mission Meeting. Today is Thursday, March 2nd, 2023 at 9:30 a.m. We're going to start off today with a prayer. Mr. Pastor Craig Bush, if you could come forward.
Okay, folks, it's an honor to be here today. Thank you so much. Let's pray. Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the privilege of being before you. Thank you for these public servants. Lord, I, the same, a public servant, though in a different realm. When you said that your people called by your name would come themselves and pray, that you would help heal our land. Pray that you give our commissioners wisdom today. Said in Book of James, if any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God. For in this day and age, we need your wisdom far more than our own wisdom. I pray that you give them wisdom, give them the ability to do their job and do it well. Pray that you bless them. Bless their families, please, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Wait, that's everybody standing for the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes, February 2nd, 2023. Is there any objections? Here, none, they are approved. February 16th, 2023, regular meeting, any objections?
Yes, sorry. Just want to add it on the last page, signature page. Actually didn't cast a vote for the stipend or the alternative. I don't know how you want to record that, but abstaining or... I don't know how you want to record that. Just, I didn't cast a vote.
Okay, I guess it would be other...
Abstain.
Yes. All right, any other objections? Here, none. The meeting ended from February 16th is approved. February 16th, 2023, are there any objections? The board meeting, here, none, they are approved. Count's approval, county's excuse, county's bid, February 23rd, 2023, amount of $2,546.46. If there are no objections, that is approved. March 2nd, 2023, and amount of $465,849.49. Is there an objection? That's approved. Approved, made in checks, February 24th, 2023, amount $54,368.22. If there are objections, that's approved. Made in checks for March 3rd, 2023, amount of $363,758.58. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval requisitions, March 2nd, 2023, amount of $94,558.49. If there are no objections, that's approved. Approval of payroll for March 3rd, 2023, and amount of $277,245.6. If there are no objections, that's approved. Here, the announcements.
Just one small schedule adjustment. If we could, please move Jack Polcowski up right after Sheriff Hanson. And Crystal Gumbel is willing to give up five minutes of her time to him. He's got some Motorola update going on at ECC.
No problem. We get running here, we'll push you, put you there even earlier.
Yes.
All right, we're going to be willing to public comment. Like to remind you that you have three minutes. If you can get up and say, when you come aboard, state your name and your address, we'd certainly appreciate it. First on the list is Mark. Mark in the room? Mark, come on board, sir. Next, we have Jekyll North.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraus, for putting a much-needed letter to the Public Service Commission of West Virginia on the agenda. It means a lot that a person who isn't affected is helping those who are. However, I'm here to offer some tweaks for consideration. I will supply you with a Jefferson Utility Vision Map, Network Value Trend Analysis of JUI, and a list of wire rate comparisons before I leave. This commission should not be supporting this acquisition as presented. It truly produces unjust and unreasonable rates. And suggesting to slow-walk unjust rates over five years does not make them less unjust or more reasonable. West Virginia Code 24-2-4GB Section 1 permits, but does not require the terms and negotiated proposals among utility parties. In contrast, the Public Service Commission has provisional responsibility under West Virginia Code Section 2, Section 24-2-4GB Section 2, to assess and disapprove asset acquisition utility sale proposals which adversely affect the public in this state. West Virginia American Water testified to the Public Service Commission that any changes to the purchase and negotiated terms would be a deal breaker. The Public Service Commission has recently required further information in case. Evidently, JUI discovered it didn't report about eight-and-a-half million additional asset valuation over some years. This additional asset somehow magically nearly equalled the contribution from ratepayers and developers, which the Public Service Commission was pressing to be removed from the price tag. Effectually, what JUI suddenly added in, what it was required to subtract out, and bingo, net zero, and the original deal price tag is still good. I can't make this stuff up. West Virginia American Water has at least seven different rate structures across the state. It says that it has one, but which one is it? The proposed rate would put JUI customers at the eighth highest in the state, which is about three times what Loudoun County customers pay. And Cave Road Utilities will be second highest on the record as the highest rate structure of American Water overall. Competitive capitalism at work? I think not. This reminds me of the days when the West Virginia Department of Education compared itself with itself on educational test scores. Any elected saying that rates are comparative needs to step outside the West Virginia bubble. Your constituents have been paying a temporary $12 surcharge per month over a decade, which equates to about a half a million dollars a year, while JUI has accumulated over $10 million in loan without any trace of projects having been done on public record. The JUI owner humbly testified that the reason he never came in for a rate increase was the protesters.
If you could finish up, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I really think this commission cannot compromise by suggesting a slow-walk rate or lower rates, which are not possible, as testified. This is a globalist company where your constituents will now pay for every project they do across the state. Can you imagine rates if every time utility was sold, the customers had to buy themselves and everything they already paid for time and time again? Please do not compromise on this, even if you compromise free pipe coming away for your land development plans. Thank you. And I will give... Would I give this to you? Thank you very much.
Next, we have Chelsea. Chelsea, sorry, Chelsea. And could you pronounce your last name?
Yes, Subban. My name is Kelsey Supanovic. I'm a resident of Jefferson County, and I'm also a deputy within the sheriff's office. I've worked for Jefferson County Sheriff's Office for a little over five years. On Tuesday, Sheriff Hanson presented to you the budget for the sheriff's office, which included the proposal of a projected career path. This career path is beneficial for several reasons. First, it will allow retention, which is one of our offices and ultimately the county's top priority. Without proper staffing, we can't respond to calls in a timely manner, conduct thorough investigations, and be proactive. We are currently short-staffed with shifts often working the minimum staffing requirements of three deputies. It is not uncommon to have deputies from different shifts working overtime to adjust for manpower issues. This has put stress on our deputies, which affects not only their work life but home life. This stress will push deputies to leave for better opportunities. Deputies can leave now to several surrounding agencies and automatically make $10,000 or more starting. Examples include the Burglary County Sheriff's Office and the Frederick County Sheriff's Office of Maryland. A career path will help ensure younger deputies stay here at Jefferson County for the long haul and not use our office as a stepping stone. This in turn provides the county with experience and skilled deputies who have the abilities to perform their jobs to the highest degree, thus creating a safer community. I'm one of the many examples in our office of a deputy who could leave now and make that large bump in pay. Another reason for the career path is recruitment. Hiring is a lengthy process for us, and increasing our appeal is key to getting qualified candidates, specifically hiring certified officers. Finding certified officers who require less training and prep before being released to work on their own not only saves the county money but provides the citizens with an experienced deputy who can quickly provide services. Our numbers have drastically decreased over the years in regards to applicants applying and testing. A career path would draw in certified officers who can see their potential future salary down the road during their career with us. If we continue to have one of the lower starting pays with no pay scale for a career path, our applicant numbers will continue to be low. Surrounding agencies understand this and have made the soundest decision to increase pay or adopt some sort of career path or pay scale. We understand this is an... There is an initial burden for the county to jumpstart this proposed projected career path. However, the reward in the end for the county and the deputies who choose to stay here and make Jefferson County Sheriff's Office their work home will be worth it. Many of our deputies are either moms or dads who have to ensure their families are provided for. This career path will help comfort and ensure these deputies if the county cares not only for them providing law enforcement services but for their personal well-being. We understand the steps are not guaranteed every year. It would have to be approved by the current commission, but it is a step in the right direction for your deputies. Thank you.
Next, we have Rob Seale.
Good morning, commissioners and residents of Jefferson County. My name is Robert Seawright. I used to live here and now live in Berkeley, but I'm also the Secretary of the Deputy Sheriff's Association. And tomorrow is my anniversary date for the county to begin 20 years of service with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. I was hired by Sheriff Ed Boober. During his term, he was successful in obtaining a significant raise for all members of the department. Since then, the raises or benefits to the members of the sheriff's department have been minimal. Any pay raise was only due to promotions or COLA. Even during those times, though, when a vacancy was available, applicants were wide to choose from or other already certified officers looking to move here, and we were lucky to welcome some of them aboard. Fast forward to now, the climate is much, much different. Our applicants are down, and those that do apply are young with little life experience in how to talk with people or interact in verbal ways. We can't believe it's by text, snap, or TikTok. You have to be able to talk with folks, which is why it's extremely important to retain the men and women of the current department. Yes, there are some of us who are close to retirement, or at least the possibility of retirement, but there is a group of about 15 to 17 or in the early stages of their career. The proposed career salary path is a way to show support for the sheriff's department for doing the job not many are choosing to enter. It will also allow officers from other agencies the ability to see a future with our department. We all understand the path's not a guarantee, but at least there is a path to follow. With other agencies in the area facing the same problems, they have taken steps to increase their pay and offer incentives to draw new applicants and attract already certified officers. It takes time to hire a police officer. There's a huge responsibility, authority, and influence. Departments have to complete a thorough background investigation into the applicant. This is a person the community has to trust. The sheriff has proposed a plan that, while ambitious at the beginning to raise the members of the department's salaries once in place, appears very manageable for future commissions. It will help show up commitment to the officers who protect and serve this county, its citizens, and any visitors exploring what Jefferson County has to offer. Please keep in mind, the sheriff's office does patrol, investigations, civil process, mental hygiene trips, criminal investigations, special response team, internet crimes against children, accident reconstruction, an officer at Jefferson High School, and a K-19 team. Side note, the K-9s are the military-requested public demonstration. Also, if you read today's paper, the arrest from this past weekend secured $7,000 in cash, 10 pounds of marijuana, and numerous pills that looked like oxycodone but are actually fentanyl. Officers trained or trained to those levels, so as we do have masters trainers in K-9 and certified experts through court are valuable members of the department. They have shown the initiative and desire to better train and... So to better their training and expertise to benefit the community and not rely on outside sources based on the crime or circumstances. In fact, Jefferson County resources and assistance have been requested across the tri-county area and even further. In summary, consider the proposed budget with both present and future in mind. We have hard-working and dedicated officers 24/7/365, no matter the weather conditions of the day. You have the ability to show us the same commitment and support we give to the community. Thank you.
Mr. Seale, thank you for your service, your 20 years. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Steve Holtz.
Morning, commissioners. My name is Steve Holtz. I've been with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office for almost 19 years. We've been working with limited manpower for a long time. Based on our current level of funding, we are unable to attract quality candidates to fill the open spots. Our deputies are forced to change their schedules on a weekly basis and also being assigned mandatory overtime to fill staffing needs. Just simply put, we're not going to be able to continue this level of service in the future unless things improve. Other law enforcement agencies across the country, when facing similar crises, they reduce services, they have no response to non-emergency incidents. They basically go to reactive force. The only reason Jefferson County hasn't felt a reduction in services is due to the overwhelming professionalism and dedication that Jefferson County deputies possess. The deputies have been taking on the burden of doing more with less for some time now, and we're at a breaking point and we're tired and need your help. We are asking you to pass the projected career path as a means to retain our membership and also recruit new deputies. The first thing this will do is we'll ensure that our deputies are not incentivized to switch departments by increasing their pay to a competitive level. The second thing it will do, it will give us the ability to present it to candidates for the job so they can see possibly where they will progress through their career here in Jefferson County. It's a huge recruiting opportunity because surrounding agencies also have scales. The sheriff was clear in his presentation. He's willing to meet you in the middle with concessions. And I want to be clear, the deputies understand that this is a... It's not a guarantee that in the future we get the steps, and we understand that the new commission would have to approve a step every year. We're not trying to put you into a hole where you are forced to do this every year. I also know that this... Most commissions love budget-neutral requests, and I understand why that's important. Wasteful government spending isn't good. Taxpayer money needs to be protected. However, I believe at times increases in budget, especially in the public safety sector, is warranted and necessary. This is one of those times. Just as this body recognized that they needed to improve wages for the ESA due to a lack of interest in the open positions, we're also in the same position as ESA is. For example, in 2011, the Civil Service Commission held one test that whole year. 54 people took that test. Just last year, in 2022, the Civil Service Commission held five separate tests and a total for the whole year of 16 people applying. I've watched as many of you campaigned for this position. You can't... You champion... I got two seconds. You champion public safety. You state that you support law and order. This year is your chance to prove that you support county law enforcement. We put our lives on the line every day. Without the approved corrected career path, I'm telling you, we're going to lose more members. You have the opportunity right now to assist the sheriff's office in retaining and recruiting members, and please approve the career path for our deputies. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. David Taff.
David Taff, lifelong resident taxpayer. My thoughts and prayers are still going out to those volunteer fire members and their families who sacrificed time and assets to ensure the safety of this community. The fact is, it only took three county commissioners to destroy over 100 years of volunteer fire company and services, when in fact, property taxes paid by the residents was part to be paid for the emergency services that the county commission took for granted. Now, the county commission expects the volunteer fire company to provide emergency fire service to the county with no assistance or reimbursements. Shame on you. Presentation number 11, IT and GIS, tourist program updated. Will it be a surcharge on tourists for ambulance service?
That's a pretty good question. Needs to be.
Presentation 12, ESA reimbursement, $30,306.41. Was this in the budget? Where's the money coming from? Don't have any documentation. Presentation 13, JCD, Development Authority, requesting approval for vacancy on executive director position. No supporting documents. Can't take action. Public needs to see these things. Parks and Recs, number 15, requesting funding for fireworks. San Marcos Park, $10,000. No supporting documents. Does the park pay an ambulance fee? If this is approved, the park will require it to have an ambulance on site since we do not have any more volunteers. They should be charged $2,000 per hour for the required presence of an ambulance. Presentation number six, Grand Random Letter to Shepherd College University Emergency Action Plan. No supporting document. Public did not review what this document entails. Therefore, the Jefferson County Commission cannot take action until public hearings are performed. Presentation seven, Jefferson County Ambulance Dispatch Head System. No supporting documents. This should be a public hearing to address such a strategically critical subject matter within the safety and of the residents, the county's residents. Presentation 18, Letter to the West Virginia Public Service Commission. In part, Jefferson County Commission is asking that the West Virginia Public Service Commission consider that any rate increase to be stretched over several years and not and due to the inflation and already stressed and suffering residents. The Jefferson County Commission asked the Public Service Commission to spread the rate over several years. The Jefferson County increased taxes by 20% to 35% this year. Last year, they increased it again. It is upcoming ambulance, the county is going to be increased on either a levy or something else. It appears the county commission can ask others to do as they ask, not as they do. It is hard to be safe with the current county commission. And I do appreciate the extra time. Even though I come on y'all hard, I do this as a service. Now, just hate. I don't hate anyone. But we got to do a better job. There's a whole bunch of people behind me that are wearing badges, that have done more. They didn't do it prepared. They did it to protect us. You guys are going to get your programs here. Appreciate your time.
Do anything, Alatra. Yeah, okay. We'll move on. June 9th, number one, Ms. Angie Banks. She online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, this is Angie Banks, the Jefferson County Assessor. I am just requesting to advertise my vacant clerk position, requesting your permission to do that.
Yes, and this is budget neutral?
Yes, yes, sir, it is.
All right, I'll move to approve the request to advertise the vacant clerk position for the Jefferson County Assessor's Office.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I carry your answer? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Tina Renner, June 9th, number two, internal budget revision. Oh, Jeff's, okay, come on, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move to rearrange your schedule. We got a radio upgrade.
No, that's not it.
We're going to move like Jeff Polcowski, the Director of March Services.
Thank you. I have three things on the agenda. I'm not sure which one of them are in, but I'll start with my documentation here. So number one is request appointment for CAD administrator. Purpose of this is to seek approval for the equipment of the CAD administrator position. That role is to manage the automated public safety computer systems utilized by law, fire, EMS, dispatch personnel. The department has assessed, evaluated, and is recommending an individual we believe could be a really good fit for our organization. Mr. Damian Hart, he's a former West Virginia State Trooper, 12 years. Current police officer at Shepherd University Police Department, three years. He just completed his Bachelor of Science in Information Technology from Western Governors University, has an AAS in criminal justice from Mount West Community and Technical College in Huntington, computer engineering courses at Penn West in California, PA. He's been seeking a path into the IT field, and our position at the ECC aligns with his goal. Mr. Hart's already familiar with automated systems as a user. He's a police officer. He does report, right? He takes calls. He understands that workflow and how the units and officers and individuals that use the systems process incidents and cases. This is going to be a huge benefit to the agency by him already understanding that process. We are excited to have that filled. We're excited that we have filled the position with an individual that checks all of our boxes. So we will onboard him on March 20th, 2023. He'll subsequently be enrolled in application administrative classes shortly thereafter. Thereafter, we have high expectations. We have offered salary of $29.8076 an hour, which equates to $60,000.
Mr. President, I just want to suggest that maybe we table this consideration until our March 16th meeting. I have some information. We discussed and moved forward with reorganizing the Communication Center back in September of '21. There's the emails when Mr. Nussel was here, also moving in the direction of reorganizing that, and I believe we discussed moving that CAD administrator under the review of Mr. Russell Burgess. So I just wanted... I found some information I would like to share with the rest of the commission as we make a decision to move forward.
Do we have minutes from our meeting that were... This rework?
I downloaded some information last night, but I didn't get a chance to get it all. I have some information here. I'd be happy to pass it around, but I would like an opportunity to send you guys this information to review. information to review more thoroughly before we move forward.
Because I do know we set the money aside out of ARCA to hire the CAT.
Yes. Correct. The position has been not filled, has been vacant, been vacant for quite some time.
Well, I know, we just, yeah, because I posted this job in October. We were given the permission.
And the whole E nine-one-one center is understaffed. I think it's important that we move ahead. We have someone that's uniquely qualified for this position, and it is needed to keep the system current with all the changes that are going on.
Yeah. And if it's mandatory reorganization, we can still bring the person on and then move them to under, under a different director or a, not necessarily director, but a department leader, if that's the case.
We decide that's the way to go.
My concern is, we did discuss the reorganization, but also hearing, I am concerned about losing a quality candidate if you can't take them down. So maybe there is kind of one, we can do the two together, like.
So I'm just, we've got the start date is March twentieth. I'm just asking the commission to consider this information before we take an action, which maybe contradicts actions taken in the past.
Well, I'm sorry.
Like Jennifer's new, she hasn't seen or absorbed any of this. Cindy's new and hasn't seen.
I would not know. I mean, finding this qualified, this posting was in October, and it is very difficult to get any qualified candidates for this type of work. So to miss out on this candidate would be, in my opinion, a big mistake.
Well, the commission's already approved the funding to go to this position. It's a place, it's two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars. It's effective fund this position for quite some time.
I agree. I think the money's there to hire them. If it's a reorganization, we could always reorder, or do a reorder after they're in. That's not a problem. I mean, that's pretty simple. You say, hey, you're not going to report to Supervisor A, you're going to support, you're going to report to Supervisor B, whoever it is.
Is there any kind of sensitive information, Tricia, that you wanted to discuss that maybe we could discuss privately?
So there is a, a personal and confidential email that I was pretty sure that was shared with prior commission.
I make the motion to approve the appointment of Damian Hart as a CAT administrator at the hour, well, at sixty-two thousand dollars a year with a starting date of March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We can have more discussion once.
I'll second that, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Anybody else?
I wouldn't mind having a look at the email. Do you have that with you?
I do. I mean, it's several emails. I mean, just, I can't vote without information. I just, you know, keep saying I just got here.
Well, and I've been here a while, and we need candidates.
Oh, I don't, I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it, but I can't, you know, I can't just vote for one candidate. That's not as long. So I don't know, I don't know where that puts us. If I may take a few minutes to look at this, and Tricia wants to discuss that.
Yes, if you want to, if you want to look at it real quick, I think that's not a problem. We should have had these documents before, before today, before this meeting, if this was going to be a problem. You should have had it, when did we start advertising this position, October?
October twenty.
Yeah, we should have, we should have had the documents in October, actually.
All commissioners have the documents except for, except for Ms. Brown. And obviously some.
Well, so I'm hearing the, your key concern isn't necessarily bringing on a new CAT administrator. It's the, it's the structure of who you're going to refer to and.
I, yes, and then obviously making sure we're in, we're following what actions and motions have been taken before and not going against that. That's the reason I'm requesting it be tabled until our March sixteenth meeting to generate an opportunity to review that.
Are those, are those, the documents here, are those minutes or are those just emails?
Those are emails. I have downloaded the minutes from September of twenty twenty-one.
We did vote that we were looking to reorganize the email. But I guess where I'm at with this is that I feel that we could do the two things.
I think we, I think we do want to parallel track as well, too.
I believe the overarching goal was to move Mr. Polenski into the CAT administrator under Russ.
Yeah.
As part of the reorganization.
That was not my call. Never has been.
And that's not how we advertised the job in October, which is what, and you all have approved that vacancy to advertise as a nine-one-one CAT administrator. That's.
If that is the case, it should have been brought up then.
Right.
Absolutely.
Well, if you want to go ahead and have your vote, and I'm just going, I hate to do it, but I'm just going to abstain from the vote because I, you know, I don't know what I'm voting for.
Sure. No, that's fine. All in favor, here no further discussion. All in favor of the motion this staff made, I'll say aye.
Aye.
The host. And one exception. So the motion passes three to one with one exception. All right, there you go, sir.
Second, second agenda item is to request appointments for two full-time public safety dispatchers. The ECC intends to onboard Bethany Mummer, a tenure dispatcher from Berthwaite County She has been offered salary of twenty-four zero eight seven five hour, which is fifty thousand one hundred and one due to the experience level. I'm moving to approve the appointment of Bethany Mummer as a public safety dispatcher, now in rate twenty-four point zero eight seven five, which is fifty-one, fifty thousand one hundred and one dollars ninety-six cents a year, with a training incentive signing bonus of two thousand dollars. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I carry your answer? Thanks.
Second person here is Brittany Moore, no prior experience. She's moving here from Merle Beach, South Carolina, to our area. She was referred, so we'll have our first referral by a current dispatch employee, offered entry level salary of twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-two an hour, which equals to forty-six three forty-seven.
I'll move to approve the appointment of Brittany Moore as a safety dispatch training at her rate of twenty-two, twenty-two, four, two, two, which is equals forty-six thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars a year, and training incentive signing bonus, two thousand dollars, and post-training salary increase once full training is complete.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, yes.
Third issue is training incentive signing bonus, training incentive, and the framework of this, so the legalities of promissory note and how it was framed and what Jordan's intention was in allowing a signing bonus to attract individual employees, but require them to remain twenty-four months. The legalities of pulling money back if they don't, don't align with rest of the code. A lot of the research that I've done, all of partners utilize that signing bonus in a step or a benchmark where the candidate or applicant reaches a certain point. So the suggestion here is that the signing bonus is a training incentive that allows for three benchmarks. First benchmark of five hundred dollars being provided at the end of the dispatch academy, that the formal classroom academy, and then they're deployed to the floor. The second benchmark would be when they are signed off of two disciplines. So when you're actual under the headset and they're able to be a third person on ship, the third benchmark is at the twenty-four month period, which aligns with your desire to keep them for twenty-four months in providing a signing bonus. So that's the, the information that you want to provide.
So the only thing that I, it's the only thing that I don't see in here, and maybe you can point me to it, Jeff, is them understanding that if they don't complete the twenty-four months of the training program, there's a repay or a payback of that signing bonus.
That, that's the thing, is that West Virginia law does not allow for that payback, from my understanding when talking to our council, that that promissory note was not something that aligns with the code. So providing them the first benchmark and the second benchmark, if they're out of training, but they don't stay for twenty-four months, they don't get that third, they don't get that third benchmark. If they leave before twenty-four months and they re, and they leave before the second benchmark, they don't get the second or third benchmark, but the first benchmark is retained.
But I think, so I was able to locate the October twentieth minutes, I do have the agenda request, and that was part of, I believe the motion was, you know, a repayment program. I think we have to revisit that motion, correct? If the motion was for them to do repayment, and we're finding out now we can't, that's why, that.
I think that's why we're.
That's why, that's why we're cleaning up that motion up, because it basically, to give them money and have a promissory notice, it's state code.
So it was restructured.
Yes. So that's, this, this is restructuring that formal.
And I'm assuming our legal counsel has reviewed it or has an opinion of which is the right way to go.
Okay.
But the record showed that Nathan shaking his head.
There, there are just a lot of issues regarding that whole repayment if you don't do this under the Wage and Evening Collection Act. You just avoid all of that by doing it this way, and then that, there's nothing wrong with doing it this way. That's why we're doing it this way, or what we're suggesting.
Thank you, Nathan. Then I'll give it due to approve the changes recommended by staff on the framework of the signing bonus training incentive program at the Emergency Communications Center.
Second.
Any discussion?
Actually, if you commend your motion to make sure to say that we cannot implement the repayment program, because I believe the original motion asked for that.
And this, this, this motion will override the previous motion, maybe in October. Because the previous motion does not apply the state code. I'll, I can add that in a minute. Thank you. All right, good deal. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that obviously our goal here is to recruit staff and to keep them, so I think that this benchmark structure that we worked out, it's our, what the commission wants, is to retain our staff. We have to be ready for any of that.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Reprogram.
Busy, busy week.
All right, next we're going to move to agenda item number two, Tina Renner.
Good morning.
Morning.
Knowing that sports today. I know, that was funny. I'm here to do, to ask for approval for a internal budget move from wages to overtime. And once again, taking an overtime is not time of hand, it is straight time in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Renner? I'll approve the, I guess, the, oh, the, the transfer of eight thousand dollars from salary and wages to overtime.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, yes. All right, next we're going to move to agenda item number three. It's under Tom Hanson, Sheriff. I think this is Rob Seld, Animal Control Grant. Good morning again. The Jefferson County Animal Control has been awarded a three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollar grant for the continuation of the spay and neuter program. This is with the West Virginia Spay and Neuter Assistance Program with the goal of increasing the number of dogs and cats sterilized and vaccinated against rabies in West Virginia. There's a three thousand dollar match, which typically pay out of their professional services line item. I'm requesting the commission approval to accept the grant to authorize the president to sign any associated documents. Any questions?
I'll move to approve the acceptance of the grant funding for the spay and neuter program and authorize the chair and president to sign, sign any related documents.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I approach her?
Absolutely. This just resolves the gap, so.
That is correct.
Oh, boy.
No, no. I'm working on that now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move to agenda item number four, Crystal Gumbel. Request approval to refurbish old mailroom and for recovery closet.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Laura Kramer. I am a MDT member for the Adult Treatment Court since its inception. Crystal and I are two of the founding members. Crystal Gumbel Shage is our Adult Treatment Court probation officer and has been little on and off since twenty fifteen. We come before you with a request. Let me also let you know some very incredible information we learned last week at our MDT meeting. Jefferson County recidivism rate for graduates from the Adult Treatment Court program, since it began in November of twenty fifteen, our recidivism rate is, not one graduate has gone out and committed another crime when they have graduated from our program. With that, what we're looking to do, we're taking people, we're making them change their places. We don't have enough resources to do that. What we're getting is a lot of people want to donate used items, furniture, clothing, those type of items. We have nowhere to put them. We have identified, I had spoken to Ms. Resmer and former John Nissel, County Administrator, they brought to our attention the old maintenance building that was used as the mailroom is not being used anymore. Laura Kuhn has absolutely joined this conversation as well, that the roof has been repaired. I believe Dean has gone and done a little spackling. What we're asking is to have that donated to the Adult Treatment Court under the supervision of our local advisory committee that I am still a member of. We have a five-on-one free seat nonprofit, and we would run, manage that building and use it as a recovery closet for use for our participants and even others. I've also had conversations with Director Keith Lowery down at Community Ministries, sharing resources with them as well. We want to keep this momentum going of getting our population healthy, and we need your help to do that. So that building, Ms. Kuhn has told me just a few minutes ago, that just last year, all of the utility costs for that were only about three thousand dollars, which is really minimum for anybody.
It's because it's about empty.
Yeah. But we're asking to use this as our recovery closet, and our participants through community service, and a lot of their own initiative, they love to give back, to clean it, paint it, we'll keep it running. Well, it'll be a resource center for information as well for our community, but we need your help in order to be able to do this, to be able to use that building, and that's what we're here in front of you to do. Crystal's a little shy about talking in public, which is why she brought my, me as her mouthpiece. But we have seen many successes. We're not done by any means.
So you're calling it a recovery closet. Is it just for storage of items for the clients, or are you going to help folks in the building? That's just what I want to know, the logistics and how we.
It's going to be used for secure for everyone. Right. Yes, yes, it'll be locked down. There will be hours, it will be open, there will be information posted on the door to reach out to someone if you're even in middle of the night needing resources. Crystal does work twenty-four seven. I can attest to this, morning and late night texts. It's not just a nine-to-five thing. Our participants will run it, we'll be there, and we'll have others, volunteers that we're going to get to come in as well. So we'll have information there. We are at the beginning of this, and I'm sure it's going to morph and hopefully get bigger and bigger. and bigger. Berkeley County has a recovery center that is amazing and we really need to start building something here and I think this would be a perfect start to that. We are planning on, we can have clothing, microwaves, appliances, smaller type furniture. I'm working at my home to maybe create a space because we have a large building, you know, which could, you know, possibly store stuff. I've been told that's tax write-off. Okay, but we're getting people, hey, I'm moving. I have all this furniture I'd like to donate, but we have nowhere to put it. But we could, in that maintenance building, have the smaller, more portable items there when somebody needs something. I know I have in the past received a phone call from Crystal, somebody's coming out of VRJ that we're going to take in, doesn't even have clothing. One, two phone calls, boom, I've got bags of clothes, here we go. She shouldn't have to make those phone calls. We should already have the stuff at our fingertips to be able to do this. And there's been so many wonderful generous, generous people within the county that want to donate, that want to be a part of, that want to help, but we just have nowhere to put all this stuff.
So my question is, how many people would have access to the building at any time? And, you know, how would we keep that a secure spot?
That would fall under for us.
I think if I could, if they could just add it to my probation key card, and then I think I'd probably be the only one that would have the key card over there.
Okay. So you would be.
No outsiders.
Responsible for letting people in and out.
Yes, correct. No outsiders obviously would be in without, you know, myself there.
Okay.
Tom, Nathan, go ahead.
Sorry, I would just say we may have to, you know, come up with a written agreement so we're all on the same page, I think. But, and also, you know, talking about painting the building or making repairs, and I think that's a wonderful offer, but you realize it's a historic building, so you can't do it maybe the way you want to, but the way the historical, you know, requirements are. So that may be a little bit of a challenge, but that's, I think, that's something.
Is that something you'd involve the whip and the head of that still?
No, I know he writes his historical pieces, but there's landmarks commissioned here in county. You know, you're supposed to use a certain type of paint.
Well, he was involved when they redid the old jail, when it became the circuit clerk's office. He was involved with that, which is why I said that, but I wasn't involved in those meetings. Patty Norman was the circuit clerk then, so I just, I saw him a lot.
Yeah, well, we have a historic landmarks commission and he may be in authority and, you know, maybe he was on the landmarks commission beforehand and that all, but I mean, I think the commission needs to know, you know, we need to coordinate, share with each other to make sure that whatever repairs are done, perhaps your volunteer labor, that it's appropriate for the building.
You're primarily using them for storage. What's the uses of, usage of electric in order at very minimum on the city?
It would be, it would be. As I said, Laura Kuhn had stated, the last fiscal year, the utilities for it was around $3,000 for the entire year.
So we turn the heat down to, you know, I'm just going to say 50, you'd be fine or turn, do you need heat? I would should ask.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking like, I'm thinking like a storage unit.
Well, no. Exactly. For a minute, yeah. If you've got running water, so.
I just wanted to be clear.
Right. When she would be over there, I'm not saying she's not going to be there. She could actually probably work out a few hours every day. Her schedule may allow her to do that, you know, sleep is optional, but it'll, it may allow her to do that with our participants, to have them over there. And the donation part of what our participants may do to it, I'm thinking on a very cosmetic level, but yes, absolutely should go through, it's worth, I'm just thinking of, you know, painting or, you know, the flooring, something like that, but I absolutely understand what you're saying, but she would, you know, be in there more than anybody, especially with the resources and stuff for our participants. And our numbers continue to grow. Crystal is just now working in Jefferson County. She used to be Berkeley and Jefferson at one time and it's just too much. We're identifying many more people who need these services. So we have a lot of people there that would be willing to work in it to keep the facility, you know, open while she's there. We just think it would be a wonderful partnership. We can absolutely work up an MOU with you all if you would be willing to.
Well, that's, that's sort of what I was going to, I think the motion today needs to just ask our legal to draw up a MOU or lease that is satisfactory to the commission and then bring that back to go on. Do you think? Okay. Is there any, is there any thoughts on that?
Just interested in seeing a draft.
Yes, yes.
Like has been discussed. Little defense.
Yeah. So I'd be happy to move a motion to ask our legal to draft a, you want to call it a lease or MOU?
Why don't you say MOU or lease?
Nathan, that's what might be put on the spot. So MOU or a lease to, to use the old mailroom for recovery closet for the Jefferson County Treatment Court.
My second, Dan.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries your answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good work you're doing.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move to agenda item number five, Mr. Keith Lowery.
I'm going to have it.
Yes, sir.
Based on the commission's authorization direction, we, in cooperation with Ms. Resmer, the position for the county social services liaison position was posted. I believe we received 24 applicants based on the training experience and education plus looking at that from a perspective of the job requirements that were posted. We independently, she asked me to be on the interviewing panel, we independently looked at each of the applications and independently ranked them. And then we came together and decided of the top three that we would interview them. We interviewed those three and came to recommend here today that we hire Ms. Jennifer Verdugo as a top candidate. She has the training experience, education and desire to do and fulfill this. The most important aspect that we looked at was in grant writing. I think that was our number one. And of all the candidates, she's the one who has the most experience, plus she has been deeply involved with West Virginia grant writing with the Economic Development Authority Region Nine and is well entrenched in looking for and representing our county throughout the state of West Virginia.
Thank you, Nathan.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Any questions? And I'll just add too, Jennifer and I went to the marriage meeting yesterday and mayors are actually kicking in money, coming together to help pay for this position as well, too. I think Drawstown is.
Wow, 25?
Twenty, twenty, yeah. 25,000.
Yeah.
And so, and that's, we don't have any buy, it went down, I know Mayor Train went down a list of what he's going to ask the other mayors to contribute, just wanted to share that with the commissioner. So this is something that is going to be, we're jointly funded and then after Jennifer starts writing grants, I think this is fully funded by grant.
And I believe.
We set ARPA funds aside for this.
Yes, to jump, to jumpstart.
Yes.
And I believe the, the offer was for.
57.
57. Her office is, the door's on it, whoever, we just have to paint it, but it will be done within the next couple of weeks, so.
And he's taking that off the space. He's donating that.
I saw, I saw the two by fours.
Well, you need to combine. So we're fully prepared to support and sponsor and provide guidance at your direction. Plus we need to figure out, we will report on a regular basis based on what you desire to hear, whether it be for a company, whatever it would like we will do.
That was my next question. I didn't know who, I'm assuming Community Ministries is supervising this person?
They're going to supervise on a day-to-day and then I would be the, and is.
Man of the, or however you want to. Potential hire an employee of the county?
Yes.
Or an employee of Community Ministries? That's what I want to know, and benefits?
Yeah, county employee.
Okay. And we have enough money from everybody's contribution to make this all go.
So to your point, Jane, we, I think we allocated 150 with ARPA, but it'd be nice to see a spreadsheet with what the contribution is from the, as they windle down and 150 from ARPA or what that looks like, the contribution from the other municipalities.
I just wanted to be clear on the details. I'm supportive of this. I just want to understand.
It's also, it's also with the expectation that after the second year, it would be self-funding because of the grant writing.
Yeah, we have two years.
Two.
So we have.
Yep. I'll go ahead and move the motion to hire Jennifer Verdugo as a social services liaison salary of 57,000 effective March 12, 2023. Any discussion? Only thing I would ask, if you could email the mayors and announce this, they would, they would appreciate hearing.
I'll do that today.
Awesome. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries your answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, Shazana Henderson. She, online.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your time this morning. So the purpose of the agenda item is to request a letter of support for the Corporation of Shepherdstown to apply for federal funding to close the construction funding gap on the Shepherdstown Path Project. To date, the corporation has received ARPA funding generously from Jefferson County Commission as well as three grants from the West Virginia Department of Transportation totaling $1.69 million for the project so far. We're waiting on the engineering report, which is expected to come in shortly within the next few days and would be expected to be 100% by the end of March and the project will be ready to go out to bid. And there's a current estimated funding gap of around $600,000. So the congressionally directed spending requests are out and they're due next week, the 10th and the 12th respectively, for Senator Manchin and Senator Capito. So we're, I'm, would like to request a letter of support from the Jefferson County Commission when there's no financial obligation attached to the letter.
Well, thank you. If you might have any questions? All right. I'll move to approve the letter of support for the Corporation of Shepherdstown FY24 congressional directed spending. This request, applications for the Shepherdstown Path Project.
My second, Dan.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries your answer. Thank you, ma'am. You send over the documentation, we'll get it signed.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Have a wonderful day.
Already here, so, sorry. I will sign it today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We're going to move on to agenda item number seven, Karen O'Probate Office. That's Nikki from the probate office.
I'm going to put my probate house. Karen is unfortunately having a personal right now, so I'm going to be here on her behalf. So basically what you have before you is, there is two estates open, Mr. Accurso and Ms. Hoffman. We have received notification from one of the beneficiaries to have the current executor removed from the estates. So both estates are under the same executor. They would like him to be removed. Mr. Coltriter is here representing Mr. Hoffman, who is requesting that Mr. Judy be removed as executor for both estates. And not sure where Nathan went.
I know, that's I'm texting.
But it does go, it does fall under your purview that you can remove from the estate. I believe he has provided all the documentation as to why they are asking for him to be removed and he is here at the venue to answer any questions or to state his case.
And they're all agreeing to this?
Mr. Judy, I believe, who is the current executor, had asked for a continuance through Mr. Coltriter's office, but we did not receive that request for continuance. We did send him a notice for the meeting today to see if he could blow one to go to meeting. We did not receive a response from that.
And there's a gentleman standing up in the back, he probably wants to say something.
That's Mr. Coltriter. He is representing Mr. Hoffman, who is asking for.
Yes, absolutely.
To be removed. I move, we convene as a fiduciary review.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. Yes, sir. Good hit. Thank you. Well, thank you for your time first. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Joe Colter. I'm here on behalf of Eugene Hoffman. I'm also joined by his cousin, Maxie Hoyt, and her husband, Jeff Hoyt. Mr. Hoffman, I believe, is watching, but he wasn't able to be here. He lives in Washington State. And he is the, I'll say, primary beneficiary of two estates, Mr. Accurso's estate, Ellen Cherry Hoffman's estate, and Hoffman is his sister. So this estate has frankly been neglected by the executive, Mr. Judy, since he took over in September of 2021. Allison Cox in my office has written numerous letters on behalf of Mr. Hoffman, pointing out problems with the appraisements that have been filed, of course, the original appraisal and amended appraisements in both estates. The, there's not been an accounting filed that should have been filed in November of last year. I will acknowledge for the county commission that two days ago, February 28th, we received a mailing from Mr. Judy, the executor's office. It contained some partial information, but no supporting documentation to account. It included things like distributions of $5,000 to his law office. A lot raised more questions than it's answering questions, frankly. And this is problematic for Mr. Hoffman for a number of reasons. Some of them are big picture financial problems. There are a couple retirement accounts of one, Mr. Accurso and Ms. Hoffman that aren't accounted for or aren't properly accounted for. They've been moved from probate to non-probate, so we don't know what's happened. The numbers have changed. There have been, I think, at least one in the accounting that Mr. Judy provided, there was at least one payment of like $70,000 to Las Vegas Bank at some point. So that's the money side. In addition to that, it really continues through some basic, I think, humane things like Ms. Hoffman was pre-made and his family doesn't know her actions. And Mr. Judy has refused, frankly, to respond to four plus communications detailing what needs to be done. Now, we've asked that you remove Mr. Judy immediately. We understand there might be some desire to refer this to Frank Hill, who is already the fiduciary commissioner on this matter. We would ask the commission to consider removal immediately so that Mr. Hoffman can step in and protect his own interests. The only other beneficiaries of the estate are have some specific requests, some of which have already been satisfied and he would be prepared to handle the rest, but he really needs to protect his own interests. There is a question about power of attorney and a deed, while power of attorney that was executed by Ms. Hoffman on the day she died, that has, that led to a deed being executed, the conveyed property that would have been part of the estate, that needs to be appropriately investigated. Mr. Judy hasn't given us any indication that he's done that. So Mr. Hoffman needs to do that to protect his interest in the estate in addition to these other issues. And Ms. Painter mentioned that Mr. Judy sent a motion to continue to our office two days ago. We did receive that motion. I checked the probate file and I've been in contact with the probate office over the last couple of days. It isn't in the file. We gave Mr. Judy the contact information to appear before the commission today and I don't see that he's not here. So this is just a continuance. It's just really a. It's just really problematic of neglect of this, of these two estates to my fine statute. If we wait, Mr., and so my point there was Mr. Judy indicated in his motion to continue that he was in Florida and wouldn't be returning until the middle of April. Well, there are statutes of limitations on certain claims that run in the middle of June. If we have to wait until the middle of April for Mr. Judy to explain any of this, we'll frankly have very little time to respond to those concerns. And frankly, with the amount of instruction that Ms. Cox has given Mr. Judy about how these things should be corrected, the fact that he hasn't done anything by now doesn't give us any hope that it will be resolved. So that's why we're asking the County Commission at this point, given the fact that really the petition is not contested, that the circumstances speak for themselves if you look at the fiduciary file, that the commission go ahead and consider removing Mr. Judy and then allowing us to work through the fiduciary commissioner, through the court process as necessary to address the problems as Mr. Hoffman administers the estate, given that he has the most acute interest in, I mean, really the interest in finalizing both estates.
I have a quick question. So Mr. Judy could have joined us online if he couldn't have made the trip back from Florida, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
And he, he isn't online?
We advised Mr. Judy yesterday of that ability, and it's my understanding that the probate office actually emailed to his office the information he would need to sign in, to appear before this commission and explain if he had some opposition to the petition.
And so his family want, sorry, Ms. Hoffman's family want him to be removed?
Yes.
See if I have any further questions? Here and none?
Well, I don't know what we can do legally. I mean, usually we refer something to be sorted out by the fiduciary commissioner. It sounds like that's sort of been, well, there's been a referral, but.
Yeah, I mean, you have the authority to appoint and remove administrators. The, typically, we like to refer stuff to a fiduciary commissioner because, I mean, I've known Mr. Coltriter for many years. I have no reason to believe that he's intentionally misrepresenting anything. However, we are only hearing one side of the story. And typically, um, we'd like to, at a hearing, like to hear both sides of the story. And that's often why you refer to fiduciary commissioner, because I'm sure this is only a very small part of the paperwork in this case. And for us to have a long hearing on this, it could take, you know, a couple of days, and you all typically don't want to spend a couple of days. So that's why we refer to fiduciary commissioner. The only thing about this particular incident is if Mr. Judy was noticed of this, and he's not here. Now, I get that, you know, maybe he's out of town or something like that. I don't know. As far as Mr. Coltriter is represented, there was no motion filed before the commission to continue. And I assume that Mr. Judy would be, you know, capable and competent lawyers these days are assumed to be capable and competent using the internet. And so he also did not sign in. So I think, you know, you've got a, you've got an issue here where, you know, that, he didn't, he's not here to, to defend this position. Often in court, you know, judges do a couple of different things. They either do almost like a default where the person didn't show, or maybe they set another date and specifically notice them to show or appear, or you're going to take action. So you could do any of those things. You could reset this for the next commission meeting with a specific notice to Mr. Judy to that effect. I think you could move ahead today. The reason that I'm always reluctant to do that sort of thing is because I just look down the road at the record and if there's any contest or anything, you know, we establish a record that's unassailable if actually the person is here at the hearing and you all make a decision based on the facts.
My, my concern is that he was made aware. He certainly could have even sent an email, and there's nothing. It's just a.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Judy was notified by the probate office certified mail a month ago of this hearing. And then, I don't want to mispronounce your name, sorry, what is it? Light Roddick?
Sorry, yes.
Email him a link, and we notified him two days ago that he would be able, but he was notified, certified mail, and got the slip back before it went in the newspaper. So I just ended up supporting.
He's been, he's been made aware. He's had opportunities to be there either online or in person.
Yeah, and that was unaware of that specific information. So it looks like you have made awareness. I think you have the authority to proceed.
What would be your, do you say proceed removal or do you say the fiduciary commissioner?
Again, we usually go to fiduciary commissioners just because that way they have more time to delve into both sides of the story. It would all depend if I feel like you've had enough facts presented before you that this fiduciary commissioner is failing with the defense. And, you know, really, we haven't had any facts presented other than Mr. Coltriter's statement. I don't know if you'd like to have testimony on that, or there have been a number of documents submitted.
If I may.
Consider that to be factual record, although. We submitted two petitions for removal, lay out the basis, as we knew it at the time, in December, December, that are verified by Mr. Hoffman himself. It's true and correct, it's best, it's knowledge, information, belief. So we have verified petitions as a factual basis for removal of each estate. I can only offer proper here, Mr. Hoffman is available. I mean, I think he's observing, but I don't think he's able to appear to give that kind of testimony. But I believe that it will be our position that his verified petitions do provide the factual record you need to remove Mr. Judy.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I believe we should follow what the family's requests are and have Mr. Judy removed.
Set a motion.
I make a motion that we remove Mr. Judy at the request of the family.
All right.
Based on the evidence presented. That's, that's good. That's good. Thank you.
All right. I'll second that. Any discussion?
Can you reiterate first, sir, what was your concern if it were to go to the fiduciary committee? You were talking about timelines or why would this be?
Well, there's been a good bit of delay only. And so for instance, if there are assets, retirement accounts, that were belonging to Mr. Hoffman, there may be questions about whether there are tax penalties, whether there are required minimum distributions. That's one issue. Bigger issue is a question about a power of attorney that Ms. Hoffman executed for native debt that then was used by the attorney in fact to execute a deed that conveyed real estate to she, Mr. Accurso, and in Shepherdstown, changed ownership significantly, moved, moved the property outside the family into somebody who didn't, who wasn't a family member. So those are questions that need to be investigated. We've asked Mr. Judy to do that investigation. The only response Allison Cox received was he had no reason to believe that she didn't have competence. Didn't indicate to us what he did to determine it. Very non-committal. So the statute of limitations for some of the claims that may arise from that, from the setting side of deed or so forth, run in June. So we have a very limited amount of time to do, so for instance, if we need to get medical records for Ms. Hoffman, the executor can do that. Mr. Judy's the only person that can do that at this point. As far as we know, he's not done anything like get her medical records to see what her competence involves when they die. So that's something Mr. Hoffman can do if he were the executor. That's an example of why he needs to do this soon or later. If we go to the fiduciary commissioner, I'm confident that he would make the same presentation. The facts are the facts, and that Mr. Hill would see it the same way. But that's going to take him probably months' time at the least. Mr. Judy indicated in the motion to continue this hearing that we received, but apparently probate office didn't see, that he wasn't going to be back from Florida until mid-April. So unless he's going to appear at that hearing by video, it's going to slow things down for him. We easily could be in June. And unfortunately, that would force Mr. Hoffman in the position of possibly having to file a lawsuit without having the opportunity to fully research and investigate that lawsuit, preserve his rights. And that's one of the things we'd like to avoid.
I just have another thought. Remove Mr. Judy, who is the executor of these state. And I know you, Mr. Hoffman, wants to be the executor of these state?
He does.
How do we make that determination? I mean, if this is, does she know? Black paper. Mr. Hoffman is the brother, correct?
He is the brother of Ellen Cherry Hoffman. Right. And he is the sole, okay, so if I may explain. He is the brother of Ellen Cherry Hoffman and the brother-in-law, of course, of Richard Walter Accurso. He is the primary beneficiary, residual beneficiary of both the states under the wills, because of the way the wills were written. So other than Mr. Hoffman, the only other people who have an interest in the estate are a couple of people who have received specific amounts of money or a specific amount of property. Some of those people have already been paid by Mr. Judy. So they're interested in satisfying. It's not clear why Mr. Judy satisfied some, but not others. That's another reason for removing him. I would point out to Ms. Tab's question that we have two petitions, one for each estate that Mr. Judy is administering both. It might be important for the commission to know that Mr. Judy was not appointed by the will. David Cameretti was appointed as the executor under both of their wills. He resigned and appointed David Judy, as per the terms of the will. So it's a step removed. Our petitions, both of them, ask the County Commission to first remove Mr. Judy, then revoke him, and really, it goes without saying, revoke his powers. Appoint a fiduciary commissioner to review the actions he's taken so that we can address what has been done. Appoint Mr. Hoffman, Eugene Hoffman, as, as the new personal representative that we're up on, and direct that, direct Mr. Judy to deliver everything, including all personal property, including the ashes that he has them. And I didn't get into all these details, but there's concerns about Ms. Hoffman's computer. She was a publisher or an editor, and there may be manuscripts of value, intellectual property on the computer. We know nothing about that because we haven't had access. So it gets down into that level of detail. And finally, to address the compensation that Mr. Judy might claim for the work that he has done on this. So there are six requests in each petition. I would call that to the council's attention, commission's attention, because we're asking to do those things and follow up to them.
So you need motions for all of them, right? Or you're requesting?
I would ask the commission to grant the relief in each petition as it's been presented. I think the simplest way to do that, okay?
So would you like me to try it again? It was rather messy the first time.
Yes, and grants.
Well, let me try this again. Okay, so I make a motion that we.
You're going to.
Please help me again with that.
I'm, we would ask you to grant relief requested in both petitions.
Grant the relief requested in both. Okay, okay. So I make a motion that we grant the relief requested in both petitions, and we move Mr. Judy as executor and appoint Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Is that a little better?
Eugene.
Mr. Eugene. Based on the evidence presented.
And I'll second that again. All right. This is a revised motion. Does anybody have any discussion?
Yes. I want to make sure we do whatever is done because of Greg, because it's a tangled web. And I understand counsel's position, and he is representing a client, and it's, it's difficult when you haven't heard from both sides, or maybe there might be three or four sides. And I want to ask our counsel, do we have the authority to do everything requested in the petition setting as a fiduciary review?
Yes, and essentially, for the most part, you're removing the executor and basically directing, and appointing a new executor or administrator, and then directing everything else to Mr. Hill as a fiduciary commissioner. So that's really what's. You know, again, it's, it's a little unusual because we don't have Mr. Judy appearing here. However, it does appear as though he, you know, has noticed and failed to appear.
Yeah. All right. I just wanted to be clear on that. It means a lot to me also that her family are here and are requesting his removal. That, I think that's important to note.
Right. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please signify and say an aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries your answer. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have to make a motion?
Yes.
If there's no objections, we're going to turn to, return to a regular session and take a five-minute break. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is how CGI video is making their money. So they have really been like, are you guys ready? Are you guys ready? Because they have already pre-sold some of these from before COVID when we stopped it. So they already have a few that are asking to get back and get them out here. And then, um, once they've done these, there's a three-year timeframe. So at the end of three years, then it's time to refresh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that really helps from it being stale and having things on there that maybe, yeah, are not relevant anymore.
All right, sounds like a good program. Does it cost the same thing if you like that?
Yeah.
It's like.
It's unlike normally when I come up here and go, oh, my golly, it's Russ.
Hide the check.
Exactly. So this is, this is really nice, Russ. Nice change, change face here.
Thank you. I'll try to do better.
I'll be happy to move the motion to approve the CGI video project in Jefferson County as part of the promoting, improving towards Jefferson County, West Virginia, adding to the West Virginia County. Go ahead, this is West Virginia, Jefferson County, West Virginia website.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
I don't see Mike sign. And I will be one if it's like one of them that were running early. So available, but we have plenty of stuff to finish this. We can jump to. Well, so we just jump to agenda item number thirteen, Mr. Ryan Snyder. This is request for approval to our job to make an executive director. In the floor, sure, sir.
Thank you. I'll be pretty quick. We want to get the current on this one. We've got a lot of projects and stuff going on in office. We want to get that position filled as soon as possible. We have a search committee already together. They are reviewing the job description now, intending to meet one evening next week. I would just want to come before you guys today to go ahead and get permission to post this job. That way we can get it out there as soon as our committee goes through the job description, looks at it, says, hey, that's good to go. We can get it, get it out there and get this process rolling.
Thank you for being proactive.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
We try.
Um, I'll move to approve the advertising to Jefferson County Bell, the authority director of executive position.
And I, sorry, Jen. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we're going to go to unfinished business, a request for funding for the 2023 fireworks. Uh, this continues from two sixteen twenty-three. Is anybody online to talk about this at all? We kind of.
Jen? You're so muted. Jennifer, can you hear us? Jen? It's all right.
She says she's muted by you.
It says attendee is not muted.
He's getting opposite message. I'm texting him.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Very good.
How are you guys?
Good, thank you.
All right, so.
Welcome. Yours, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to kind of give you a clip update on where we were. Um, our operations committee met earlier this week. And, um, you know, we are moving forward and the committee is moving forward with, you know, trying to find funding to bring back the fireworks to Jefferson County in two thousand twenty-three. Um, we have received a verbal commitment that the city of Branson is in support of the event. We do not know officially yet what that full amount will be. Um, and we have had board members attending other municipality meetings around the community. And, you know, we've put in requests to them as well. Um, so we're still very much in the waiting game to see, I think everyone's waiting for the other organization to kind of see what they're going to do. So I think, um, you know, municipalities are kind of waiting to see what the county is going to do and vice versa. But, you know, we, we do intend to hopefully move forward and, um, you know, find the funding to bring this back to the community.
And the, the request remind me was for how much money? Ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
And I'm looking at, uh, Chris, that we, we can pull that from the call severance. Is that correct?
Oh, we can.
Okay, okay.
And something I've been thinking about, that if the, we could agree to fund it each, well, no, I can't speak for the municipalities, but we could do it based on population, divide the ten thousand by the percentage of the population of what county, county residents and the different municipal. I don't know if that would be a way to get the ball rolling and get everybody to commit to an amount. You know, go ahead with the figures right now.
I think Tony's. Can I just, we kind of, we came with the ten thousand to the commission in that same vein and went to the municipalities with events or with amounts of smaller.
Okay. That's, you've already done the math?
We've done so much.
Also wondering, Tony, if anybody has happened to approach any of the other businesses?
We are approaching big and small.
Okay.
We are, we are sadly running a little bit behind the eight ball in timing this year, not knowing, first of all, if the pyrotechnic company could even get things. They, you know, last year they were down to the day of getting shipments in. But, so we are running a little bit behind, but we are reaching out to all types of businesses as well as the governmental agencies.
Okay.
So I guess, I know you, you all are coming up on a deadline to sign a contract.
We are.
That, do you have to put the full amount down when you sign the contract or is it a portion?
We put a portion down and honestly, if we had even a verbal commitment, we could go ahead as parks and rec and put that deposit down, knowing that it's coming in.
I guess I'm trying to understand the overall cost of pulling this event off as in relative to what you're asking the commission to commit to.
The overall budget that we worked from to get these numbers was approximate cost between thirty and thirty-four thousand. That's for overall costs, including everything from porta bodies to donations for the reserves, marking all of that. Again, the ten thousand that we requested from the county and the amounts from the municipalities do not cover that full cost either. So parks and rec, of course, will put in and any other donations that we're seeking to cover. So we're not asking any one entity to cover everything. We're looking for a partnership to present this to the entire event.
Okay, that's, that's what I think was, oh, there when the ask first came out, basically.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, uh, certainly I don't have a problem funding this. Um, I hear from constituents and residents, taxpayers all the time that we don't have anything for our citizens to do here in the county. This is a great event. It's a great community event. So I'd be happy to move the motion to, um, to, to pay ten thousand dollars or offer ten thousand dollars to, um, San Michael's Park for the fireworks for two thousand twenty-three. These funds will be taken from our whole severance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Karen, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll make getting an affirmative answer elsewhere.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, next we'll move to Mike Science, uh, interim director of Jefferson County, Mr. Service. He's a busy guy this week. And then we're also, we'll also discuss, um, number seventeen with you as well, too. It's Calhoun County. Angels dispatch against us. So we're going to take care of both these at the same time.
Morning, everyone. How you doing?
Good.
Uh, it looks like my items just are monthly. It's a reimbursement for expenses, equipment, transition-related stuff for January twenty-three. Total thirty thousand three oh six forty-one. We have the list compiled.
Yeah.
Just, um, just looking for a re- approval for reimbursement.
I'll move to approve the thirty thousand, three hundred and six dollars forty-one cents to J C E S A for costs and supplies, equipment, services for the EMS transition during the month of January two thousand twenty-three. Uh, this is to be funded at ARPA from our EMS system allocation. Um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Karen, Nancy. I, I was asked to, uh, put on the county ambulance dispatch in the CAD system. There, you want to talk about that? Can we talk about it?
I mean, uh, if you want me to bring it, it's been, really, it's just, uh, uh, through the switching of the system. You know, we've gone to where the, it's all county-owned units that are going to be transporting. So there's been some question about if any volunteers are going to be allowed to use any of their units. If they still own one in our system for nine-one-one transport. I think it's, the way it's been explained, uh, you know, I've talked to you, I've talked to Dr. Treese, and it's pretty much removed forward as the, all the county-owned units are going to transport nine-one-one calls, bill for service, and we'll maintain the service. We provide, Dr. Treese agrees with that, that the plan was the plan. Uh, so I really, we just need a formal declaration, I think, from the county because there hasn't really a formal statement been made by you guys that states that there'll be no volunteer units utilized for, uh, or any private units or anything other than Jefferson County-owned units for transport service in the nine-one-one system.
Yeah, I agree. So if they have any questions, um, to make it, to make it formal, what your request is, I'll be happy to move the motion to only allow the county-owned ambulances to be dispatched in the CAD, uh, in the Jefferson County CAD system. Does that, thanks.
As long as it doesn't exclude us from our mutual aid agreements where we use outside resources. I think we're talking about the in-county resources, as long as we make sure that, that, uh, doesn't limit us to our, we're only discussing what resources are within Jefferson County that we're dispatching. Maybe funny how we worded, but.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to second that with, uh, hopefully an amendment you'll agree to that we would have our legal counsel draw, draft that statement.
Sure.
Sure it's, actually. Correct, correct.
Yeah, so.
Nathan, I just want to.
Yeah, thank you, Nathan.
And you're okay with that amendment?
I will, I'm perfectly fine with that amendment, absolutely. And, and to, to Director Science's suggestion as well.
Yeah.
Now, how you write this, a motion up, sure, I have no idea, but good luck.
Thanks.
All right.
So to clarify, are you making a motion today or are you making, uh, am I bringing back a motion for you to make next, next statement?
I just want to make sure it's correct. So I, I think we'd better to bring, I hate to delay it.
No.
I know you're making the verbal.
Right. This would be a, a draft, a draft to probably address this.
Yeah.
That reflects, that reflects my.
That makes sense. I mean, I'd hate to approve something and then we realize that it wasn't worth it exactly.
Exactly, and that's the something.
But with the understanding between now and then that it is just a.
That is.
Currently with the intent is just to have the, our county-owned ambulances dispatched. All right. Good luck, Sarah.
Yes.
All right, any more discussion? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Karen, Nancy? Anything?
No, unless you guys just wanted to.
Do you have any questions for, um, Director Sign, why he's here?
Yeah, I mean, yesterday went off with very small, minor problems that we expected. Dispatch, you know, things we had set up in training, go live, but no issues as far as service delivery. Everything went well. Employees had a good day. The EMS system operated like it normally does every day, so.
Mike has a question. Um, I did hear that there was a bit of a hitch around Middleway at some point in the day that some, there was a delay. It was a, would have been a four-minute response time. It took about fifteen.
I don't know the exact numbers, but obviously if you take an ambulance out of that station, there's going to be a dispatch. It's going to be a change in the amount of time that an initial unit shows up. Uh, I mean, there, all, several departments are working on the rapid response licenses. And how we're going to deploy that or dispatch that. Depending on how we set it up, it, it could cause quite a bit of work, extra work for Director Polatski to build into the system. So it's not something, uh, we may be able to automatically dispatch them initially. They may have to just listen up and respond. Uh, so we're, we're going to have the ability to get people there, just maybe not the transport unit be the first person I'm seeing.
I'm aware of the utility.
Right, the concept.
Aware of that, but I, I do worry about, about that kind of thing happening more.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
Kind of a big deal.
If I may, in the past, when a constituent has said something to me, I've tried to get the specifics of when it, what happened.
Yeah.
Usually I've communicated through the director to say, hey, do you look into this?
Specific call.
From the time the call came in, they can pull the information from the time the call actually came in to when they were dispatched and when they arrived. So that's, that's what I've done in the past when someone is like, oh.
Yeah, that's fine.
In emergency situations, it does seem like twenty minutes to folks.
Like an hour.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we can get all the data from.
If you have a specific.
Make sure everything appears.
I'm not trying to put more work on you, but that's.
No, no, that's fine. We'd rather get the information on that exact incident and check into it.
I think that, um, people, constituents, residents are all very concerned.
Oh, sure.
Going up in certain areas because those ambulances have been removed from those spots. So I think it's important that we pay really close attention to that.
Yeah, and, and the changes we made, I have told everyone, are not written in stone. They're not meant to be the next twenty years. So, I mean, obviously, we're going to pay, have to pay attention to all the response times, how things happen, what factors into that. And then we'll evaluate from time to time and see what changes need to be made. And, I mean, no guarantees. It's just the way it is today is the way it will be next year.
And hopefully, as we get more staff, we can have more staff.
Yes, staffing is.
I mean, but you're always evaluating the response times and where we need to put the resources. We'll have an effect.
And, um, just, just as an added measure, at least at the ESA board meetings right now, we usually get an update of the call volume per station or where at least the staff is deployed. So that's every month that comes out and tells us what the call volume is. Obviously, it'll be a little different looking, uh, moving forward, but it'll still let you know how many calls are coming into a specific station that has our staff.
All right, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Anytime.
All right, um, while you're here.
Sure.
I've overlooked this memorandum of understanding from Shepherd University.
Shepherd University.
I asked for the, the LOU. We haven't got a copy of it. I asked for the emergency response plan. We, we haven't got a copy of it. So that's just, that's just the update. There's really no update.
No, I, it's, it is impossible to write a plan without knowing the specifics and having a meeting with those people and going over what. I mean, any type of incident or function, we need to know how many people, the site, the resources available or police involved to, and what they need to write a plan. And we have zero information. And the way I understand it, you know, Shepherdstown has provided standby services in the past, uh, which they could still continue to do. And it's always relied on the nine-one-one transport system if there was a patient. So that's still in place. We provide nine-one-one to Shepherd University. So if, if they would just provide that plan, we can verify that those things are, that they require are still in place. But, yeah, we've not received any of that information, so.
The difference is just that they can't transport.
Yeah, and normally, uh, it's my understanding, the unit there for standby has to remain while the game is going on. It cannot leave the field. And that's a requirement through the colleges. And, yeah, they call dispatch center and say they need a unit for transport. And nine-one-one dispatch unit, it comes in from whatever location's available and picks up the patient. So there really should be no change. If, you know, we just don't have the plan to view it.
And I put this on, I left this on agenda from last month, hoping we, we had something to talk about, an actual documentation which we have received.
Right, correct, yes.
So, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
You might have some questions, I guess. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, see, Charlestown's here. So we're going to move to letter of support. Uh, this is a, a gen item number twelve, I mean, excuse me, number twenty, grant funding is consideration for Charlestown Utility Board and Flash Assistant.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for having an audience with us this morning, or this morning. Appreciate the time and consideration. My name's John Barkley. I'm the chair of the Charlestown Utility Board and city manager of Charlestown. And I come to you today on behalf of our board of directors and our general manager, Christine Golliver, with a request for a letter of support for an application for congressionally-directed spending that will be made to Senator's Capito and Mansion. We have a tight window on this and we're before you here today with a, I believe it's a March eleventh deadline, twelfth, thank you, to have this letter in as a part of the application package. The reason for this, uh, request for three point eight eight million dollars in earmarked spending from Congress is to, as you know, in reading your letter here, to repair and modernize a, um, sewer utility system that C Tub manages, um, along with the abertances and the pump stations that come with it. Uh, this system traverses the entire county and has a regional benefit that we think will be derived by this project. We have an eight million dollar project before us that we're going to go forward with. I think we're at ninety percent design, ninety-five percent. And it's going to pose tremendous benefits to the users of the system as well as the future, uh, users. It will also serve to defray some of the costs that otherwise would have to come through, uh, loans and the issuance of debt going forward. So this is roughly half the project that we're requesting funding for. Our twenty percent match, we're capable of covering that within the C Tub budget as it stands now. And we want to go forward with a solid position of, uh, a diverse range of grant funding, perhaps loan funding, and an earmark that really sets us forward on this project. So again, the regional impact, we think, will resonate in Congress. When the senators go through their Senator Appropriations Committee deliberations, we see this as not as a, um, an impact for one local municipality of our local government unit. We see this as a regional benefit that serves an economy of scale that I think meets, um, the, uh, the standards of our respective senators. So this has been vetted through our general manager. Uh, we're well along in the process for the project. And we ask respectfully for your consideration of the letter of support. We will be also asking the city of Branson and our Charlestown, uh, city council to issue letters of support as well. Three are required. We may have more, but we think the, the reach and the influence of Jefferson County and its commission will put us in the right direction and give us a nudge, um, with respect to the senator's consideration. Thank you, Mr. President. We have, I'm sorry, we have maps and other stuff, too.
So if that's. Yeah, sure. I will get, yeah, I certainly will.
Yeah, so this project was carried over, um, prior to, uh, prior to the consolidation of the district and the city of Branson. So there are several projects that are specifically in the county and several that are in Charlestown or Branson. You know, there's a, a large collector line that benefits everybody through, basically from the civic center to the wastewater treatment plant. And so this project, uh, basically completes the, the obligation when we went through consolidation to get this project, um, done for the benefit of, of all of the community. Specifically, there are improvements in the industrial park, um, upgrades to the Jets Farm Pump Station and, um, you know, some reversal of flows, various other, uh, pump stations that are being rehabilitated and upsized to provide additional capacity. Um, you know, one of the largest stations is the Flowing Springs Pump Station, which, um, will be significantly upgraded to, to benefit all of the northern portions of the county and other areas. So, and like I said, a big, one of the big components is the Evans Run Interceptor, which, um, will basically increase capacity, double capacity for the whole collection system.
Will this facilitate the schools, the new school building off of the Ole Campe?
Yes, they will be connecting to the, um, the Route Nine Sewer Line that we constructed, um, two years ago. And certainly the Flowing Springs upgrades will accommodate that future development through there.
Well, I think that C Tub provides critical infrastructure for the county. So any opportunities for earmarks or grants, definitely want to take advantage of them.
Absolutely, and we've got various. Yes, yes.
So which, uh, which looks favorably upon the water quality benefits of this project as well.
So I will make a motion, um, that the commission sign the letter of support for C Tub requesting congressionally-directed USPA grant for critical wastewater infrastructure upgrade.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those who care should answer. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, we're going to jump here to, uh, uh, number eighteen, new business, uh, the West Virginia Service, uh, Public Service Commission about West, West Virginia American Water's purchase of DUI and rate increase in the basis of this jump.
Thank you. Um, I recently was able to spend some time with the, um, some officials from West Virginia American Water. I spoke to them about several things that I found interestingly, they work. I understand that they're, they're, uh, pretty invested all over the state. And, you know, the one, one thing that I want to say is I don't take a position one way or another personally on the sale. I know, I know there are some who do. Um, my issue has to do with, uh, the, the ratepayers and the, the rate increase that they would experience. Um, I'm concerned about that because of the, um, of course, these times and we are dealing with inflation like we just haven't seen before. And, um, what I have requested in my, in my draft letter is to, uh, the, to the Public Service Commission and that they reject any proposed rate increase. Of course, if they do decide to approve a rate increase, we would request that it be as small as possible. And finally, if they do approve that increase, that they implement that increase over a period of years rather than all at once. And that would hopefully allow time for wages to catch up to costs. That is, you know, something that I have heard a lot about from constituents and, uh, want to be sure that, that the voters know that we're listening. This does not affect me personally. I, I live, um, in Shepherdstown and we have a, well, septic system. This is not an issue, but I know for a great many people in the county it is. And, um, I, I think that it would be, I think that it would be helpful to a great many people if we, uh, vote to send this letter to the Public Service Commission.
Does anybody have any, any questions or discussion for us?
Well, I, I think you, um, you know, certainly outlines that I don't think any one of us. Well, I think you, you know, certainly outlines that I don't think any one of us, you know, more burden on the taxpayer to pay for the basic requirement of life, which is water. But something I would like to add is that request the PSC to have local public hearings on rate increases or whatever issues that surround, you know, the water supply and whatever you can.
So I do know, Commissioner Tab, I'm not sure it's technically, if it was a public hearing, I had gone to about two weeks ago regarding the case. Were you speaking of more general hearings?
Well, if they actually do the sale, I mean, if this all goes through, and then there are going to be rate increases, you know, I don't know if it's all set out in the sale, what definitely the rate increases will be. And I think the public needs to have an opportunity.
I can enter that just a little bit. I do believe that that has been set out. They have some information on their website and rough information for me to have a look at. Discuss several different things regarding their rate increases. And I do know that it's also at the same rate across the entire state and not just, you know, local. So, so I found that interesting and, you know, just, again, I'm either here or they're with it, but I do know that they have programs that offer assistance to people with lower income and that you, you don't just get it, you do have to apply for it and so on. But, you know, the rate increases are pretty high. And I did learn, of course, that the Public Services Commission do determine what those rates will be. They determine how quickly they go into effect and, you know, I just, I think it would be helpful to the citizens who would be affected.
I also had a addition that I kind of want to incorporate to this. When I was going through the testimony, I don't know if you've seen the question, but one of the topics was about should the water customers subsidize the sewer customers and vice versa. Historically, the Public Service Commission has not allowed that. So I would be interested in putting a line saying that they maintain their precedent, that the water and sewer customers should not subsidize.
Sure, okay.
So the additions to this letter is Claire's addition and Commissioner?
Well, you know, this is a statewide through American Water, but still, I think there's different localities impacted. I don't think American Water is entirely statewide. They, I believe that they have interest in over 30% of our state. They've done lines and provide water to people all over the state. Well, and I can understand that, they're a big company, but I would just, I know we probably won't get it, but I would like to request, you know, when the rates are going to increase, you're looking at, we have a public hearing.
Locally.
Locally, in Jefferson County.
That's a fair add to this letter.
Yeah.
So do you mean, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just want to be clear.
So Claire wants to add to the letter as well, and Commissioner Tab, we just want to put on there if there are any additional rate increases to have the hearings here in Charleston.
Any additional, other than?
Yeah, right, okay. Whatever's, you know, I understand the sale agreement is something different, but, you know, I think, you know, the PSC is going to rule on when those rate increases go into effect and how much they are. I want the local folks to be able to make a comment in person.
Yep.
Can you and I speak afterwards about the proper wording of what you'd like in that letter and I can go back and?
Well, we'll just have, do you have, we can send it to Charlotte and she can add it.
Do you, you want to do that? I can do it or you can do it?
If you send, if you send the original document to her and then she can, she can, we can add them both. Then if you want, if you want, what I would recommend, Charlotte, is if you send it back to the Commissioners before we, before we stake it, it'd be great.
Fine, well.
Yes, that'd be great. All right. Do you want to move the motion?
So, yes.
With the two amendments?
I make a motion that we approve the draft letter with the two amendments discussed and send it to Public Service Commission.
Second then. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries to answer. Thank you. All right, next we're going to move to agenda item number 19, request to secure outside attorney law firm to engage with human resources and personal matters where attorney is, where our attorneys completely, Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, so, and I have the only agenda. The purpose of this request is to secure outside counsel or law firm to assist in matters of human resources or personnel where the county attorney is conflicted out. There's many clients, I mean, Nathan works on a routine basis with a lot of our staff. If we have an issue that arises or something that involves our staff or department to department, so county clerk's office to the county commission, Nathan's conflicted out on those issues, it would be nice to have someone to consult with on those matters or those issues as a governing body to get some direction and guidance. Most recently, we had the issue over the stipend being paid. We approved it and then we couldn't do it and then finding alternative ways. It would have been, it would be nice to have some input on that related to code. I know there's oftentimes also the sheriff's office with pay issues or things of that nature, following policy and that sort of thing, where our county council might not be able to give us guidance or tell us what direction we can and cannot go because it's department to department and he's county attorney. So I spoke to Wendy Grease, she is associated with the West Virginia Association of Counties. She is also, I believe, represents, I know I've seen her at the Auditors Conference, but she's, I believe, also with the County Commission Association. She's not asking for a retainer or anything. This would be as we need her or when we need to use her and this governing body would make a decision on when that would be appropriate to use her. If we decide to go this route, I just believe it would go a long way to provide some preventative measures if we had appropriate guidance where we can't seek it or obtain it from our county attorney in specific matters. I don't see this being a month lady or this will be an as needed or a case-by-case basis. And I included her letter of agreement, what her hourly rate is, her associate, her paralegal. Again, no retainers, just if somebody reaches out from the county commission at the direction of the county commission on an issue, then we would, she would bill us for the time and the hours for the sake of, you know, because I have no idea what to put against it. Again, I put Miss Grease does not require a retainer, but that the commission considers since we're in the budgeting process, this would, to me, would be professional services is that at least $5,000 of the request in professional services. I'm not saying they earmarked, but that it's available if we need to use her services. And it's just, it's an ounce of prevention is worth a penny of cure. This, I fear that, not to be cliche, but that's what I'm suggesting with this. She knows the county, she knows the state codes and laws, she's worked with the counties, county associations, so it made sense to speak to her. She's often presenting related to human resource issues and personnel issues at all of these conferences. So that's the reason I reached out to her to ask for the guidance and suggestion on this.
I have met her a couple of different times, two or three different times at different conferences and trainings. I thought she was great, but I believe that she probably would have been helpful to speak to about the Board of Education things at the beginning of the year because for Nathan had to recuse himself and things like that. So I think she would have been helpful then if we needed it, you know, that would be, that would be my opinion.
Anybody have anything else, any questions?
Yeah, I have some comments. A big surprise. To my knowledge, no discussion or authorization has been granted to anyone to secure a letter of engagement to deal with HR or personnel issues. No terms of a letter of engagement or funding source have been discussed or agreed upon. Letter of engagement presented today states, and I quote, "The word will not include any issue that is presented or could be presented in pending litigation involving Mrs. Gordon that would in any way present a conflict or appearance of a conflict with our clients in that case." To me, that is a huge red flag. And then my last point, and while this agenda request refer to the county attorney being conflicted out in certain matters, it is also incumbent upon each individual commissioner to consider when they are voting if there is a conflict of interest and if so, to recuse themselves from discussion and voting. This, I, I cannot support this. This, none of us knew about this ahead of time and we've never given anyone any direction to look for someone like this. We have a county attorney, an elected prosecuting attorney with his staff, and unless he comes to us and says he needs more help some way or another, I'm not going to vote for this.
One of the comments that I had is fact that Mrs. Grease, I'm sure she's a very competent attorney, but she is in Charleston. And if you look at her hourly rate, it's $250 an hour. So I know the argument will be, well, she can do most of the work in Charleston, but there will be a case or time that if she's engaged with the county, that she would have to travel to Charlestown. And no matter how, which direction you go, the northern or southern route, you look at about a 10-hour round trip and that's, that's $2,500 of taxpayer money just to get her here and home, let alone that she would bill us for a hotel room and meals, which she's and certainly would be, could be entitled to. I kind of go on the lines where I don't know we, if she's openly available for hire, which attorneys are, we hire them as an as-needed basis and not necessarily have a contract with them because we should, we should gauge any type of conflicts before we hire them. That's the first thing you do, especially in the business world. I know one of my business clients, they had to call four different attorneys before they could find an attorney to represent them because due to conflicts, that's very, very common in the business arena of attorneys because they represent so many different people. And I think that, I certainly don't think it's a great idea to go ahead and just hire somebody up and be there waiting. I agree also that there is a conflict of interest with, in my opinion, with Mrs. Grease because of the current lawsuit that we're in from the former financial director here at the county. And I know that Miss Grease is involved in that and I think it's a huge conflict to hire her for that reason.
I'd like to add, you know, Miss Grease did indicate that she did extensive research on the conflict, which is why she called out the specific case. And this is just a letter of engagement. If we never use her, we never pay her, is basically what it is. It's not a contract. She did extensive research on conflict. I spoke to her when I was down there, it took her about two weeks to get back. She was sensitive to that, which again is why she called out the specific case. As far as travel, I mean, she is in Charleston, but we do a lot of things remote. I mean, this is really just a preventative measure in situations where we cannot get advisement from our attorney. We can decide to call her, have her on our meeting or whatever, an executive session or whatever it is, to ask for her advisement on a specific situation. This is more or less preventative measures where we can't, where Nathan cannot provide that guidance or Matt's office cannot provide that guidance. This is not replacing them, this is not overstepping them, it's just preventative measure for the county commission where we have instances that we can't get legal advisement on an issue because we have our county attorney that's conflicted out. So that's why I brought it up and then all, I mean, it's been in the agenda, had it published in the agenda so everybody could review it, so it's been in there for a week.
Sure.
Well, I guess kind of a question and comment I had. I was under the impression of when issues did arise, we were kind of already doing this. So like when there's a contract that needed to be done and Nathan felt that he wasn't accepting all those contracts, he would be, use someone out of Martinsburg. And I guess I'm just not seeing, like, if something arises and Nathan has to be recused, each situation is going to be individual and unique and I would prefer to look for outside counsel at that point for the specific situations rather than upfront have someone. And I guess I also, I don't know, Nathan could tell us what kind of is standard practice in other counties because obviously this isn't unique for Jefferson County where the
If I may, I'm sorry, I was just going to make a point. If we have a conflict with Matt's office or Nathan's office, this is where she would come in. Obviously, he can't refer us to an attorney or the outside to represent us or for us to have guidance if we have an issue with Nathan or who reports in the Matt's office. This is what this is. It's not pulling the rug out from under him and saying we don't, you know, it's nothing against him. This would be protection for the commission. If it's department to department, even if we had an issue with the county clerk's office or something of that nature, Matt and, and well, Matt's office would be recused from that. This would give us an opportunity. Recusal, correct me if I'm wrong, would also mean that you wouldn't be able to necessarily refer us to the attorney, correct? I don't know what might stick.
Okay. I've been here for eight years. In employment law cases, I could not recall any time that we had conflict. After deep thought, I did recall one instance where there was an allegation against that department head, or I'm sorry, an elected official, that we did retain counsel for a review, I guess, on that issue. So that's one thing. I mean, I, we represent the commission, so we don't, if we're dealing with employees of the commission, it's always in our custody is representing the commission. And I just, I can't recall times that we've had conflicts.
Absolutely. I want to, I want to talk about conflicts, doesn't sound like there's very many, but and you can put, don't put words in my mouth, but if there's a conflict with us and the, say, Board of Education, you can't represent us, we would have to go outside counsel. What I would add is, I think Berkeley County, Berkeley County has their own counsel, right? That's, that's correct. Okay. And so this commission can seek counsel or show me backup. We can restructure to have our own counsel. Does that make sense? Can you explain that, how Berkeley County?
Well, I can't, and I think, I think there's, I think there, I think everybody's addressing different issues.
Yeah.
In my opinion, so Nathan's saying, we answer statutorily under 7-4-1, we are here to represent the county commission. The problem comes in when you have other elected officials that may have legal needs. And if we're adverse to them, some counties, and I'm telling you, I've checked around, I've checked with prosecutors, they take the tact that the county, the prosecutor's office doesn't represent the other elect, it's only the county and the Board of Education per statute. So they kind of leave them on their own. This, historically here in Jefferson County, the office of the prosecutor attorney has tried to help as a cost-saving measure and because we do have a specialized civil division with two attorneys in it, we're able to offer those services in a way. But when the, we But when the, when you have a, a, you know, an assessor or clerk or sheriff and prosecutor adverse to each other, and adverse doesn't mean they're suing each other, they could be on the same side of a lawsuit, but their interests could be adverse. So that, that's when some of the entanglements come into play really. And I think what Commissioner Jackson is, is, I think I'm trying to understand, like, is what, hired for the other electeds? Because that would be important, because if they're hired for the county, then they have the same conflict that we would have.
No, this is for the County Commission. This is what, this is just for County Commission.
So if, it's not for the other electeds?
Correct.
Okay.
And it would be in the instance that there is an issue from one of the other electeds. The County Commission can figure out the best way to handle issues. This could also be as, as simple as we have a personnel issue in the County Commission's office. Nathan works with these folks on a day-to-day basis, I mean, he wouldn't be expected to, I mean, case in point is the case that's going on or the current litigation that's going on, right? I mean, I know that went through risk pool, but he, yeah, right. I mean, I know there was an attorney assigned for that.
I'm, I'm just, I was just trying to offer some, some background.
Yeah, I'm just trying to explain what the.
Offer no opinions, clearly a policy decision, the county's, the commission.
And one of the things is just the definition of conflict. There's, you know, legal conflict where we can't represent a partner. And that's what I was saying, employment law decisions, we represent the commission. And I'm not having maybe eight years of where there was an issue regarding employment law where we had to step out or at least we had to pick one side versus the other. Like, so that it's a legal conflict is, is my question, is the real question for us. Do we have a legal ethical?
I guess this would be a question I have for Commissioner Jackson. So then, like, in the letter, it does say that, and you said she studied extensively for two weeks about.
The conflicts.
For these conflict. But so then, for like my personal knowledge, is she involved in the case with Ms. Gordon?
So she is kind of in representation for the sheriff.
Okay.
Yes, so that's why she wanted to take the time to determine and that's why that specific case is called out in this.
Well, so then I guess, and it kind of be what you just said about Nathan, a concern I would have is, I know that legally, she may not be conflicted as long as she's working in cases other than Ms. Gordon. But like you said, if Nathan's working in the office and your concern is he works with these people, that would be my concern is that she represents the sheriff and, and may have a, a different relationship with the sheriff than she would have with us.
So she's only representing the sheriff in this particular case, she doesn't represent his office as a whole. So that's why she wanted to do that research. This is an offer for her to be representation for this commission in matters of human resources, personnel, employment of all.
I guess it would just be my concern, and obviously I, I don't know her personally, but if we had an issue with the sheriff down the road in his office and she had represented him in the past, I would just have concerns that there, there could be conflict. I, I know you're saying that it's not, but that's.
Well, I was suspect if we had an issue with the sheriff's office that she would conflict herself out, we wouldn't even ask her to help us in that nature, given the information she's provided.
But so then wouldn't, because I guess what I'm saying is, I, I, I appreciate Nathan understanding you saying kind of preemptively have a counsel here, but I'm just of the opinion that we should take it as a case by case basis. Because like you're saying, if a situation comes up with the sheriff and then we have her as, as our person, well, now we're going to need to look for you. So it's just.
I, I think, I think the sign is, this is kind of a waste of exercise because we don't know what, what, what we need to hire her for until the case, until, until the time comes. So, and, and we have so many great attorneys here in the panhandle. I'll, I'll go back to the fact, if, if she would have to travel here, how much that would cost the taxpayers. So it, and, and it just doesn't, doesn't look right, the fact that she's already in, in a case here now with a former employee of ours, it just doesn't, doesn't seem right. I think it'd be a waste of exercise to sign this. Now, moving forward, if the commission would ever decide to, to avoid any conflicts, Mr. Harvey does provide us counsel. We could hire our own counsel and do that line item onto our, under our line budget under legal. And, and then we've, then that attorney could, could just only represent the commission. So there would absolutely, absolutely not be any conflicts in the future. I just want to throw that out there for an option. I believe that, I believe that's how Berkeley County does it, I think. But I may, maybe I'm wrong.
Berkeley County does do it that way. The prosecutor's office there has provides no services to the county counsel over there and that's, I mean, and the call is also like that. There's others, I just, I just don't want to speak.
And you, you would be willing to move two hundred and fifty thousand of your line items to rush to hire a really top-notch attorney? Nathan, you said that.
If I had it, yeah, just give me two hundred and fifty thousand more dollars in my budget, I'll give it right back.
So I'm just saying with this, she's not charging a retainer, we may never use her. I don't think there's anything wrong with this engagement letter being signed. We don't, I mean, there's no risk with it, there's no commitment of funds. I threw five thousand in there in case we need to use her, we may never use it.
Well, and I'm having difficulty, this was apparently solicited and we haven't opened it up to any other attorney. I mean, we're a public body, most job postings are public. This isn't a full-time job, I understand that, but it is a letter of agreement that involves, you know, payment for services. And I think it needs to be, if anyone feels the need to be forward on it, it needs to be posted up.
And, and I, I agree with you and we would have to know what, I mean, if we're going, if we're going to have people bail from it from Charleston, we should know what it's going, what they're going to charge us to drive up here for a case because they're going to have to be here at, at some point, maybe, maybe not. And in, in the art of being transparent, we should put this, if we're going to do it, we should put it out for an RFP. So if we want to be transparent. But again, I'm, I'm certainly not support that she's not charging a retainer or, I think this is a, and I, I mean, I, I believe what I hear, she's a very competent attorney, but I, I think we just hire it as, as needed and needed and, and this is just not something of a procedure we decide to take, take up.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we sign this letter of engagement. There's no risk, there's no commitments, there, there's only, I mean, if we use her, then it's there, she's just there. One of the reasons I engaged with her, she is at all of the county, rather, state auditors, training, she's at all of those. She knows the counties very well, she presents them all the time. Is the reason I approached her. I just think this could be a safety net if we did need to use someone. There's, it's no contract committing us to any obligation, she's not charging a retainer. We may find in a year from now, we haven't used her at all, there's no harm, no foul. We don't pay her if we don't use her.
I do see that they have a, an office in Martinsburg, is that, at least that's somewhere.
But she's.
She would still have to.
She lives in Charleston.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. We have a motion on the floor.
I second.
And we have a second, any discussion? I, I said everything I wanted to say, so I don't need to say anymore. Anyone else has anything else? All in favor of the motion, please say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion bells two, three. All right, Nathan, then, need to skip over you, but this is the Nathan Cochran, five minutes. Do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything to say.
I have an idea about that. All right, is there any more business that needs to come forward to the commission today?
I don't have enough data, are you kidding me?
I definitely, oh, yes.
I have an idea. Today is the day, the job, county administrator job position closes at the end of the business day today. So I will be compiling all those resumes and I believe we agreed, I would email them to all of you for review and selection and then I guess the next timeline, maybe the next meeting, do you want to talk? Do we meet and discuss interview dates or?
Well, how many, how many we want to select?
I think we talked about in the last meeting was two.
Two per, two per, two per commissioner?
And we, and we give them, we gave them each a half hour, I, I saw some, we gave them each a half hour to interview. We'll, we'll have a call, a special meeting to do that. It'll be all in executive session.
Right, next, the next meeting, we'll figure out the logistics of maybe interviews and dates.
Well, can you put that on the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, I can.
All right.
So I'd just like to ask, and I think Ms. Kraus wants for this too, can, can we have those printed as well and just put in our mailbox?
I'm sorry.
It's supposed to be a pain, but my, my printer, that's. You're good as online, Jane, online or paper. I can print mine. Okay.
Yeah. Do you have any?
Twenty-three.
Would you like number sixteen? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. We covered that with, when Mike Simon was up here.
And that was, so, so just going back to that for a moment, I did need to ask, and I'm sorry about, about that, but was the question that you haven't received a memorandum of understanding from Dr. Hendricks or Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Okay.
And Shepherd's down there.
Okay.
Neither one has provided that to us yet.
Okay.
We haven't received a plan.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, I, I thought that that meant that we had one and, okay, so.
We're, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, we asked that they could, they could supply us the plan just so if it needs modified, we could do it or we're not. Director signed, reworded that, and we haven't received anything.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there anything else?
No, that was it for me, thank you.
All right, if there are no objections, we adjourn.
Other than one more signature, President.
This is just a magnetic retreat, remember?
Yeah.